Hello, hello, welcome to Cafe Cito Break. I'm your host, Rosangel Perez. And take a moment right now to please share and like this show. With me tonight are my co-hosts Mark for NY and Cozy, and special guests, George Sarantopoulos, who is running for city council. So are you ready? We're gonna review our little faces. Hello, everyone. Hello, New York. We are some of the bold, fearless freedom fighters. We love New York. And with me today are some of the lions in New York. So I want to introduce myself officially. Rosangel Perez, one of the Perez sisters of Cafe Cito Break, celebrating 13 years this month of podcasting. Happy birthday, Cafe Cito Break. Happy birthday to the women that are part of Cafe Cito Break. My sister Alex and our other producer, who is based in Texas, Ruthie Gutten. Thank you. It is a pleasure to be with all of you. You know that all eyes are on New York. And there are many messages that are coming out of our mouths, including, if you don't live in New York, stay out of our politics, por favor. With me today is Cozy and Mark. Cozy, take it away. Please introduce yourself to the audience.
Sorry about that. I'm a former healthcare worker that was fired for refusing the COVID shot. So I'm a medical freedom activist. And that's all I'm gonna say about myself right now. Take it away, Mark.
Hello, fellow freedom-loving Americans. Welcome to another edition of the New York Freedom Fighters Podcast airing every Monday. I am a former state assembly and city council candidate, and we actually have a very special guest today, who is running for the city council seat that I ran for four years ago. Was was always behind the scenes, never really much of a spotlight person, not really on social media, comes to the event, supports candidates, and now he's putting himself in the spotlight by throwing his hat in the ring. The winner of the Republican primary, looking to make it two elections in a row as he wins the general election. George of the Jungle, that's the concrete jungle of New York. George, welcome to the program. And what made you decide to throw your hat into the ring after being behind the scenes for so long?
Well, first of all, you know, I really had to sell it to my wife. You know, when I told my wife I was running in January, February, I was thinking about it. She is not a happy camper, but I'll tell you a little bit where I'm coming from. About two and a half years ago, I mean, I was always involved with campaigns, Mark, you know that I was behind the scenes. I was a consultant on some campaigns. It's not my primary business, but I really felt after 2020, I wanted to get Republicans elected here in New York. And I got very involved with local politics. I was behind the scenes, running campaigns, consulting on it. I ran Vito Labella for state senate here in New York. I ran Ying Tan for the primary. But I never saw myself as the guy in the front, right? And then two and a half years ago, I got diagnosed with prostate cancer. Now, usually prostate cancers, you know, you know, it's not great, right? But it's one of the better cancers to get because there's a lot of treatment options. But at the time, we found out after a scan that the cancer had spread way beyond the prostate and spread to the bones and the lip nodes. And, you know, it wasn't looking so good. Two and a half years ago, I was making last will and testament, living well, all that fun stuff, you know? And I'd asked my wife, you know, I asked, first of all, I asked the doctor like, hey, you know, what's the, you know, what's the prognosis here? And he's like, wow, we don't really like to speculate, you know? We don't really do that. I'm like, Doc, I don't have a pension, you know, you know, I'm a self-employed. I've owned my own business, you know, I gotta know like where I'm at so I can put my wife, you know, my wife helps run this business, but I want to put her in a good setting. God forbid if something happened. He said, wow. And then I finally got it out of him. I spoke to a couple of doctors. It said it was a 70 to 90% chance I wasn't gonna make five years. And, you know, let me tell you, that's a real heavy burden. You really get time to think about a lot of things. And I did a lot of chemo. I told the doctor, hit me with whatever you got. I did hormone therapy, and I'm not ashamed to admit it, I prayed a lot, a lot. I'm happy to report, last year, my MRI came up clean, completely clean. That doesn't happen, you know, not when you're in stage three and four. That doesn't really happen too often. And decided that, you know, I traveled a little bit last year, enjoyed life a little bit last year, but I came back and I said, you know what? I'm tired of the way the city's being run. I'm tired of, you know what? I'm gonna put myself out there. So I sold it hard to my wife in January and February, but she was not a happy camper. And I'm happy to report that I've had a clean bill of health since then. And my energy and that fight that I brought to this cancer battle, I'm gonna bring to the city council when I win.
Well, good to hear that. And you also celebrated 16 years with your wife Heidi, so congratulations on that. She ran for district leader as well, so she's actively involved in politics, helped with my campaign as well. So glad that you made it through that tough battle, and I'm pretty sure you're gonna make it through this tough battle and come up and win this election. It is a winnable seat. It's something, like I said, the one I ran for that I almost won, the district changed a little bit, but it is very winnable. So it's probably one of the, one of the seats that we really need to put a focus on with boots-on-the-ground efforts. But George, what are some of the things you'd like to accomplish after you win the city council seat?
Well, I always make the argument that as New Yorkers, we don't leave the city, right? We don't give up on the city because there's a fire, hurricane, or tornado, or whatever. We give up because there's death by a thousand cuts, right? It's not affordable. I'm being harassed on the train. There's, you know, there's emotionally disturbed people. I just like to call them crazies. There's homeless all over. I can't afford car insurance anymore. A package got stolen up in front of my home. All, I got another parking ticket, and all these things just add up. And the real estate tax went up. And then it just makes it unaffordable to live here, and it makes it tough for you to live here. And people just give up, and they move to North Carolina, Florida, and, you know, even Jersey, God forbid. But, you know, they even moved to Jersey. So it's, people give up because it's death by a thousand cuts. I think my overarching theme for my campaign is, we gotta restore the livability of living here in New York.
And do you have any specific plans in place for that? Or is there, I know you're the law and order candidate. Bail reform is a statewide issue, but what can we do to increase like community police relations and, and things of that nature?
Well, we, listen, there's parts of the district, look, I'm, I'm running to represent Bay Ridge, Dyker Heights a little bit, Seagate, Coney Island, Bath Beach, right? But Coney Island and Bath Beach are neglected part of the district. Justin Brennan, Councilman Justin Brennan has pretty much forsaken Coney Island as far as policing. We have violence there. We have kids with guns. We have a underpolicing. We don't have enough police because cops are retiring hundreds every month, maybe even. So we are not getting enough police. So, for example, and we are taking away the tools that they need to work. For example, I don't know if you guys know about or talk about it, they want to do away with the gang database. So the gang database, you get arrested, and you belong to the Crips, the Bloods, whatever, MS-13, whatever gang. They're gonna keep track. You got arrested at this location on this date, and you were doing this crime. And they're gonna tie you in with your gang and try to figure out your, the momentum or movement that your gang is doing towards a certain crime, or certain type of scam, or whatever you guys are doing as, as a criminal organization. They want to do away with that. I mean, you have to go there as a councilman, even if you're in the hyper minority, and use that as a bloody pulpit to go over there and screen bloody murder every time you can. I would say Vicky Palladino, Ina, Ariola, Frank Morano, they all go there. And they, even though they're in the hyper minority, they achieve a lot by bringing attention to issues. And when you start bringing issues to the public, like, for example, the gang database issue, the public's like, oh, that doesn't sound like a good idea. And they start calling their crazy progressive councilmen and saying, hey, are you supporting getting rid of the gang database? So the number one thing I think as, as a councilman, you can do is create awareness in your community about an issue and get them activated to call.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna hog all the questions here, but I do wanna point out also, when they are arrested and they go to Rikers, with the gang database also, you don't put Bloods with Crips in the same like area in Rikers because you don't want fights all the time. And you don't put too many Bloods together in the same area because you don't want them taking over a particular house or something. So there's a lot of reasons for, for that. And you said-
Clear on this, you know, the, the database is not used for hiring or renting an apartment or, you know, renting a mortgage. It's purely used as a tool for the NYPD.
Yeah, it's not put out there publicly or anything like that. It's just used for, for corrections and for, you know, police reasons. But also, you, you pointed out bringing attention, like when I was going, thought I was going to win, I was going to set up an email list for pretty much every registered voter of, and keep people informed throughout, not just the people in my district, but throughout New York City. This is what, you know, this is the bill that this council member proposed, and, you know, call your council member. So exactly like that was something that I was planning to do on a mass email list for all the voters. So I think that's how we red pill more people citywide, even though I would have just been in one area. I think once I was in there, I was gonna spread it throughout New York City and red pill more people across the city. But I'm gonna pass over the questions-
I just wanna add one thing to this. Make no, you know, make no mistake, my opponent is knee-deep in Mendami world. Her club, the Bay Ridge Democrats endorse Mendami. She used to work with Mendami. She's contributed to his campaign. So there's no question that if she wins, she's gonna be a lackey for Mayor Mendami if he wins on the mayoral race. I mean, and God help Southern Brooklyn if that happens.
Yeah, even, even the hardcore, even the people who aren't supporters of Mendami, if he wins, he's the mayor, and they'll just suck up to them, at least the Democrats that are in there. But I'll pass it to either Cozy or RA if you wanna take over.
Sure. Yeah, I'm glad you made the distinction, George, about them using that database for crime specifically, right? They're not gonna use it to like prevent you from getting a job or things like that. That's a very good distinction. And if that is true, right, which it is, right, that's what I'm hearing too, what is the purpose of getting rid of it? It seems like in New York, they love to protect criminals, and they like to penalize the regular citizens. Just like they don't want us protecting ourselves, you know, you can't even order pepper spray online. You can't order anything to protect yourself. That's a problem. And yeah, I mean, it, it just, it's just like when you started talking, right? I like what you said, like, it's about livability, making the city livable again, right? I'm saying on top of that, make it sane, make, make it, restore sanity, basically, right? Because this is insane. Like, you wanna get rid of a database that is tracking these people, we can put them away. Why are they so lenient on these criminals?
I'm not a progressive. I don't have the answer to that, you know? I mean, listen, I, I've been taught, you know, I mean, look, we have a debate now, what's going on about deporting criminals, right? Like, it's, I'm not for deporting families and children and all that, but I don't understand why something as simple as deporting criminal, deporting a criminal, is, is a, there's a controversy for that, right? I mean, to me, that's astounding, right? Somebody comes into your home, they eat your food, you pay, you, you get your loan of money, you give them some money, and they stay on your couch, and then you wake up in the morning and your silverware is gone, your silver, you know, the good stuff. I mean, after a while, wouldn't you throw them out of your home? I mean, I, I don't understand why deporting somebody who's committed, let's say, 15, 20, 40 crimes is, is controversial. I mean, if we had deported that guy who burned that lady at the Stillwell Station, I mean, if we had deported him for, you know, previous crimes, that lady would be alive today. And if you multiply that by thousands of, you know, criminals over the last couple of years, how many people would be alive? How many people would be breathing? How many people would be walking around that haven't been killed by, you know, criminals that constantly, constantly break the law?
Yeah, there's, there's no logic, there's no common sense when you're a communist. They don't have any rhyme or reason. They just wanna, it's destruction by design, but passing it over to a cafe seat.
Mate, listen, maybe the, you know, maybe the, you know, maybe the, maybe they do wanna collapse the system because then they can bring this whole, maybe there's some, maybe there's some validity to that. They'll collapse the system and they'll say, oh, you try some communism, you know, that'll take care of everything, you know? Or socialism, you know? I mean, because you, you see that, you see them being easy on criminals, and you're like, why, why would they do that? That doesn't even make sense, you know?
Yeah, when you destroy the sist, when you, you know, destroy things more, people are more relying on the government. When the, the economy's bad, and when people can't get a job, they rely on the government for handouts. And Democrats, they, they, you, you said you can't understand why they wouldn't want them to leave. It's because Democrats like spending other people's money, and they like taking care of people when it's not their money either. Like, you know, they don't care when, you know, our, our social system is giving free healthcare, free food, free money, free housing to illegal immigrants. They don't care because it, it doesn't matter. And it's just-
Like I said, I'm, I'm not for deporting families and children, but criminals, I'm sorry. That, that should be, that shouldn't even be up for debate, you know? I mean, look, you sometimes suspect, you know, what was that strategy, the Cloward and Piven strategy of collapsing the system so they can introduce socialism and communism? You sometimes see it, like, why would, why else would they let criminals run free in the city, you know?
Yep, we've been saying it for a long time, destruction by design. Sorry, or Kef, you know, go ahead.
I mean, I think that we're all kind of in the same, you know, thinking about the same thing, like, why are certain things being permitted if it doesn't seem like, you know, let's, let's allow the chaos so that then we can implement what the solutions are gonna look like? What I don't like about living in New York City and the hijacking of some of the, just the, the policies, in a sense, I feel like they're speaking to the, to a very tiny percentage, and they're not really in favor of families. And again, one can argue, right, that the way the city is being ushered and pushed and policies is so that there are no thriving family units that they're kind of pushed out of the city. And you could kind of see that when there's envisioning for like micro apartments and how people want to position that to be like, you know, the it thing. And, and it's like Janine said last week, like, in, you know, from her perspective, you have people in Brooklyn that are extremely wealthy, then you have the people who are getting a lot of benefits for free, and then you have the rest of us who are trying to survive in this craziness. That, to me, is maybe one of the number one reasons of leaving this leftist kind of thinking. But there's so much brainwashing, George, because so many people in, in communities like mine are told, don't go out to vote. Someone who isn't, who doesn't look like you does not have your best interest. They're eating everything that Mom Donnie says because, you know, he's like the hero. He's coming in, offering solutions to people who are living paycheck to paycheck in dire straits. Yet, I don't, there's no connection, like, there's a, a big disconnection between like elite money, funding certain things, and then boots-on-the-ground candidates who are really trying to make a difference for the communities. And then this entity, this little machine that keeps operating in, in, in Brooklyn. And when you, as you understand it, George, how, what gives you the motivation to sort of be like, no, I'm gonna face this because my city's in trouble?
Well, listen, you face cancer, everything else is kind of mediocre, you know? There's nothing they can do to you that scares you. I mean, look, the machine tried to steal the election for me, right? I mean, I don't know if you guys know about it, Mark, I'm sure was following, Cozy probably was following it. But, you know, there was dead people who voted in my election. And then we found, that was, I don't know if you know this, just for your audience, there was a person who went to the local councilman's office and said, hey, I didn't vote in this primary. And then they started looking into it, and they found not only that he, his vote was cast, but there was dead people that had voted in this election. And then my team found, you know, with my legal team, when we were looking through it, we found 22 ballots thrown in a box a week after the election. And they all went for my opponent. So, you know, listen, I understand the machine very well. I don't know where that came from, but I hope they get investigated and get sent to jail. I actually believe they are being investigated currently. But the, you know, so the machine, you just gotta keep going, you know, you, you can't, you, you, there's times, you know, it's, it gets hard, you know, and the machine wants to stop you, and the people wanna stop you. And, you know, you got newspapers that call you up with stupid, you know, stupid questions. You know, there was a controversy about me a couple of days ago. I don't know if you guys know about it, but this was the, this was the gotcha moment for me, right? So I had, I bought in 2020 for my wife a Kanye West hat, a couple of hats, right? And, and apparently, it, it was, it was marked down as a donation to his presidential campaign. And funny fact is, they were trying to say, well, you're supporting Kanye, you're supporting racism or anti-Semitism. I'm like, I bought that in 2020. He went crazy in 2022, 23, full-on Nazi. So I, unless I have a crystal ball, I didn't know about it. And, you know, I went completely into the junk drawer when he went full-on crazy. You know, this is the nonsense that they try to use to try to, try to keep you down and try to sell this thing that you're racist, that you're anti-Semitic, that you're fascist. I mean, choose your words, you know, these are the, this is the left's playbook from, you know, from, from the last 20, 30 years. They call you homophobic, a leftist, a racist, a fascist. You know, you just gotta keep going, you know, facing death, everything else looks like nonsense.
Well, I wanted to make a comment on that. Thank you for sharing that story, that testimonial, right? Because it's, I, I don't know how many people would have looked death in the eye and just been like, you're not defeating me. I'm gonna keep on living my life. I'm gonna live it to the max. And so that's a beautiful testimony. And it also is encouraging to see that someone who's like faced death and been like, no, like, if I can meet this, I can meet the battles of like loving my city and, 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 and leading it. What are some of the things that you are seeing within, like, your community that are some of the things that you would like to help support, like, either change or, or, you know, or add to?
I would say the number one thing that I get a lot of calls about, or when I knock on doors that I hear a lot about, is that our community has homelessness, which it never had 10, 15, 20 years ago. And I'm sure Mark can attest to this, he knows Bay Ridge pretty well. We never had that. And they're at the 95th Straits, 95th Street Station, they're at the Alpine Theater on the side there, they're at Cannonball Park. And we are just turning a blind eye to it. And I believe that not only do they make themselves, do they make life around hell for everyone else, they're living in hell themselves, right? They're living in this hell of men, they have a mental issue, mental health issue, and they're, but the hell of addiction. They're always chasing the next high. And as a humane society, you know, we, you know, the progressives always claim how humane they are and how, you know, they care or empathetic. I don't understand how we can let our fellow man just spiral and be trapped in hell. I mean, that's really what they are. They're trapped in hell. And we have to show them tough love. A lot of them get government benefits. We should go to them and say, listen, we're not, we're not here to cut off your benefits, but in part of you going to, you know, getting benefits of any sort of any money is you gotta go to our program. You gotta clean up. I mean, we wouldn't accept that, again, going back to my analogy of somebody sleeping on your couch, and they were doing drugs all day, we would be like, you know what, you either gotta get to rehab or you gotta get out. So why are we, and as a society, why do, what, these people, 70% of them, they estimate are, you know, yes, there's a lot of them that have mental health issues, but a 70% of them, on top of that, have an addiction issue. That's one estimate. I'm sure it's not a scientific estimate, but it's, it's one activist estimate of how many are dealing with some type of addiction issue. It's just shocking to me that we're okay with that, you know? And this fentanyl, fentanyl is, is killing people, and it's killing people every day, and it's trapping people in this hell. And I think we can do better as a society.
Yeah, that was part of my platform when I was running as well, to mandate drug testing if you're not working and receiving benefits. If you got, if you're working and you're just not making a lot, and you're getting benefits to kind of supplement that, that's a different story. But if you're not doing anything with your life, you gotta go and, and, and get drug testing and go into a program. Your benefits aren't gonna cut, get cut off if you test positive. You just gotta, you know, get some type of help. So if you know about the appointment a month in advance, and you're still getting high in advance, then, then treatment is definitely necessary. We gotta wrap up the first half hour of the show. I like, I was smiling before when Cafe Cito talked because we always have the, the New York sound effects in the background with the sirens when she's talking to give you that real authentic New York feel. But we're wrapping up the first half, which is airing on Brooklyn Free Speech, Saturdays, 2:30 on BPN. And most people think, you, you mentioned all the names, I'll, I'll quote Lesko Brandon of the Fake News Song that I have because people think the R stands for racist, and they won't vote for the R, so they, they, they call it a alt-right, far-right, all the wrong rights, xenophobic, transphobic, all the phobics, tinfoil hat, QAnon crazy conspiracy theorist. That's what the fake news does. They brainwash people to believe that Republicans are racist, they are family-oriented, God-loving, caring people who wanna make a difference, who wanna help the homeless. The last 12 years of Democrats, homelessness and crime continued to increase. So you make a decision if that's a coincidence and if it's time for real change or not. With that being said, the non-PG portion of the show will start momentarily. Thank you for joining us on Brooklyn Free Speech, and we'll see you next week. All right. Now for the non-PG, as I call, I'm still not gonna curse. I don't, oh, I don't often curse. But you know, the, the cursing kind of happens because I'm so passionate this year about the mayor race because I think it's a legitimate chance for Curtis Lewa. The Democrats are splitting the vote between Cuomo and Mamdani. It's not an even split, but there's a lot of people, Democrats, that won't vote for a communist, but they won't vote for the R either. And he has a legitimate chance to win, and Republicans wanna screw it up by telling people to vote Cuomo. So that, that, that pisses me off. So I've gone on some rants this year where, you know, I'm, even in sports, and over 10 years of doing shows, I, I try to keep the language clean, but I just really went off this year because of that. But at the 30-minute mark, I'm gonna officially just do an announcement to endorse George. If you could cut that for a, a clip later as well. So Mark Shushkavich, former city council candidate of the 47th District in South Brooklyn. I am officially in- I am officially endorsing George Sarantopoulos for New York City Council. The, a kind-hearted person that wants to make a difference, bring the streets safe, help the homeless. Help our community overall. He's a good man. He's the right man for the job. I don't endorse candidates often. I've known George for a while. He's been behind the scenes. He doesn't, he doesn't have a huge social media following. He doesn't care about the spotlight. He doesn't care about fame. He's doing this for the right reasons because. He's a true New Yorker. He loves New York. He doesn't like the way things are going. And he threw his hat in the ring, just like I did. He got more involved after twenty twenty. And I encourage every single voter of the forty-seventh district to vote for an actual change. George Sarantopoulos for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. I mean, listen, uh, you know, the pressures of running and when somebody. Like yourself, who knows the pressure of running, endorses you, that means a lot, you know, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, of, of, of course, the fake news is gonna call you QAnon now, since you're associated with me. With my, with my endorsement.
They, they definitely won't. Listen, George, you're a breath of fresh air, brother. Um, it, it's great that I'm proud of you that you stepped in the ring. Uh, because you bring intelligence, you bring a calm, there's this calm demeanor about you, calm energy. Uh, and it probably has to do with what you just experienced. Like you said, you had this battle, so nothing's gonna faze you. You're coming in with a clean head. You're obviously intelligent. And, uh, you're gonna bring balance back to city council, right? Another seat, you, you jump in there, you're gonna help. Shift the balance back to some, some more sanity, right? Uh, you'd mentioned Vicky Palladino, Ariola, um, Bob Holden. You know, you would be a great addition. Uh, we're praying for you to get that seat and, and restore some sanity, brother.
And, and, you know, I just wanna add something to what Mark said. Listen, I wanna talk to everybody in the community. Uh, I've talked to progressives, I've talked in mosques, I've talked in temples, I've talked in churches, I've talked, um. You know, left, right, uh, you know, I wanna talk to the Uzbeki community, to the Pakistani community, to the Arab community, to the Greek community, to the Italian community. I'm not running for city council for a small piece of Bay Ridge. I, the district is almost a hundred seventy thousand people. It's almost like the United Nations. I wanna run and speak to all of them. Uh, Chinese too, I don't wanna forget that. My wife's Chinese, so I better not forget that. So you need to talk to everybody in this district, uh, you know, I, I've been, I've walked the projects. Uh, talking to people over there, what's their needs down there? I've talked to the gated community of C gay people there. I've talked, obviously, Bay Ridge. Like I said, I, I'm willing to talk to everybody and I should never be admonished for talking to somebody. Who's far right or far left, that we shouldn't have dialogue. If one thing Charlie Kirk taught us is that we should have dialogue with everybody.
Yeah, and, and the way I see it is you're not a Republican, you're not a Democrat, you're just saying same things, like, hey, let's get the crime down. You know what I mean? Like, yes, we should arrest criminals. Yes, there should be a database, obviously, um, you know, make it livable, like you're saying. These are common sense ideas, right? Of course, we didn't talk about this, but I'm sure you're against the. Decriminalization of the sex workers and all that craziness that is happening. In Jackson Heights, I know that's not your area, but just an idea of, of how these people think.
I was at a parking lot, I was grabbing a full confession, I've lost eighty pounds since my cancer remission. But I broke down, I drove through the McDonald's drive-through here in Coney Island. And there was a hooker there. And that's how it starts with one person, you know, one woman selling her body there and then it starts two and then three and Roosevelt. Probably started with one or two and then, you know, now you have like a bizarre there of, uh, a whole open marketplace of flesh. I mean. Look, uh, you know, sex work i- is, um, should not be legalized. I mean, God, God help us. Uh, women are gonna get trafficked, uh, it, it's just, I, I just can't imagine why we, we'd be okay with that, you know?
You know, I contemplate some of these things because. When you hear people say, but you know, sex work, give up, it's my body, my choice, that's the crowd that is supporting this. Um, and, and I just see it as a big hypocrisy because it's not across the board. It's not my body, my choice when twenty twenty happened, right? And, and I feel that twenty twenty, yeah, like the mandates and the jab, but so much more and so much worse than that. We are now dealing with the repercussions of a society that is wounded, that is hurt, that is angry. That has been left behind, whether it's the, the young people, to the elders, to those of us who lost our livelihoods and are still trying to figure out. How to like make the math work in New York City. The anger is there. And what makes me wary is how people are using that anger that everyone rightfully feels in different ways. But they're taking it out on innocent people. They're, they, they hear a name and then they wanna take all of their anger out on anyone who, for example, represents the R, right? The Republican, oh, that's the taboo word. Why is it a taboo word? We. This is when I come into the conversation and I am the squeaky wheel, right? At MTV, we always knew that the squeaky wheel was what got the oil, right? So I am the squeaky wheel for my community. That this is not okay and accepting, you know, coming from the community when people say, you know, snitches, get stitches, keep it quiet. So then that, then you build on that. And now, when, for example, the. We were experiencing the migrant crisis and you see where were all the people being put in the shelters? It wasn't in the high pricey, we, sheeshy neighborhoods, some of them that they could get away with, but mostly. It was putting people where they can blend in. So then that leaves vulnerable communities that are already vulnerable to begin with, competing with. The resources in that neighborhood and then everybody's fighting. And then everybody starts looking at each other as the enemy. And now you even had infighting within Latinos, right? Where it's like, oh, are you fresh from the streets? Or did you just get here? Are you a newcomer or you're one of the old G's? I'm like, is the, why are these even the conversations we're having? We should be thinking about how to care for this neighborhood instead of, um, weaponizing, you know? People forget that some people run on different parties just so that they could win. It doesn't mean they could be, they could be fake Republicans or fake Democrats. This is why we tell people, vote on who the candidate is and what they're representing. Vote for common sense.
Well, listen, by the way, talking about the immigration issue. The most anger I hear from people are here that people that have been here fifteen, twenty years. And they're mad at people staying at a luxury hotel that the city's paying for with a free cell phone. Yeah, I would say they sound more Trump than Trump. When it comes to the immigration, uh, you know, issue, because they've been here fifteen, twenty years. They've worked hard, they've saved every penny they can to buy a home or a condo or a regular home. Or they put themselves through college or put their kids through college. They've worked their butt off, probably eighty, ninety hours a week when they first came here. To, you know, whether it was in a restaurant or some other business, uh, you know, some menial jobs to save up enough money to get ahead. And they're angry. They're the most angriest, you know, it's not people that have been here two, three generations. It's the immigrant who's been here fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, worked their butt off, they're the angriest. They sound. They sound more, more Trumpian than anybody else. So that, that to me is surprising. That's number one. And number two, uh, what I'm hearing a lot out there, you know, and I should mention this, is people are freaked out about Mumdani. Uh, I, I hear it and every third or fourth voter I talk to, everyone's like freaking out about that. So. So I do think that it will adversely affect the city where a lot of people are gonna move out, you know, uh. Uh, and we're just gonna bring in more and more, um, you know, of the, uh, you know, we're gonna put up more and more immigrants in luxury hotels, I guess. I guess that's the plan for the population.
It's completely understandable that if you came here legally as an immigrant. For you to be upset, like you said, people who worked hard and, you know, had to, you know, fight and scratch and claw their way into. A success and even if they don't own a home and they're just renting and living paycheck to paycheck and they didn't. You know, they're not successful, but they, they, they're still struggling. Of course, they're gonna be mad that this person came in illegally and they're in a luxury hotel with free food, free cell phones, like. Why would you not be mad? I mean, I, you know, it's, it's, it seems like a legitimate reason to be pissed off. Cause you did things the right way and, and struggle. And then these people do things the wrong way and they get handouts. It's just, it's just not right, but.
But here's the thing that I, that I wanna just sort of say, right? People get upset and then we get angry at the people who were invited here to come in the first place, right? So this is sort of like the nuance where I'm like, no, it's pop, people playing games, people, politicians playing games with, with, with human beings. You know, like, so there is an aspect of me that feels absolute compassion for the people who, who believed Biden, where he's like, come. Come on, welcome, you know, it's, it's open. They didn't care and, and then it, it doesn't help when you have all of these activists. And even reporters that I have spoken to specifically in the street arguing me, we're having quiet conversations off to the side. And they're telling me. That it's okay, you know, and you know, it's a, there's a country of immigrants. I get that, but from someone who. Was the woman writing the budgets, right? You start to understand that everything is, has value, right? And it's a resource. So yes, this is a country of, 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 built by immigrants and I really appreciate that. But at the same time, where is the money gonna come from? Who is paying for it? Because it's not the government that's saying, hey, we love you for existing. Here's all money for you. Here's all for everyone that's here. That's not happening. It only seems to be happening for a certain group of people. What? For the vote? Is it for the vote? Because, you know, that's been a conspiracy theory that some people have had, um, let's vote, let's bring in these people. Who are now going to be loyal to the Democrats and they'll be forever Democratic voters. But that in and of itself doesn't make sense because a lot of these people are escaping communist societies and they're coming here because. They are hoping to anchor their dreams. So. Just thinking about this, George, is, it hurts the head. How do you even communicate this to people who are trying to make sense of this in the street? And are like, well, if it's not Mumdani, then of course, then I'm gonna vote for Cuomo. But in my mind, I'm like Cuomo got you here. Cuomo opened the door to so much that we're experiencing today. How do we bridge that conversation where we keep hearing? Cause I don't think Cuomo has a chance to be, beat Mumdani. That's me. I'm speaking only for me as a person not representing anybody else's opinion here.
I, listen, I, I, I think we, we have to circle around Sliwa and push him out. And get it, get the message out. Um, I'm worried about Cuomo too. I have a hard time voting for Cuomo. Because of all the blood on his hands. I mean, think about. The bail reform, right? He signed the bail reform bill into law, right? And they did it, they did it, they didn't do it in regular session. They threw that bail reform in, in a budget, in a, in a budget. So it snuck in. And because they didn't wanna have a, a debate about it and it snuck in and that, and. How much death is on his hands because of these criminals that are let loose that are out there that committed all these crimes? And then, and then on top of that, he killed fifteen thousand seniors. You know, he sent fifteen thousand seniors to die when we had a hospital ship. Off the river that he could have put people in that. And the reason why he didn't wanna put them there is because he didn't wanna give Trump a victory. He could have put them there, they could have got better there. They, they probably had all the facilities that they needed there. Instead, he sent them back to the senior centers and they died and they, and, and fifteen thousand seniors later died. That's somebody's brother. Somebody's sister, somebody's mother, somebody's father, somebody's grandfather, somebody's grandmother. I, I wanna remind people. That's not an abstract number of fifteen thousand. That's a real number of real people that really died. And I can't stress that enough. I can't, I cannot bring myself to vote for Cuomo based on that. Uh, and, and the fact that he's even, you know, to me, he's morally reprehensible and the fact that he's even a contender, I, I, I'm just shocked. I'm not gonna lie here.
Well, the fact that Cuomo is there actually gives Sliwa a chance because like I said before. Some Democrats don't like Mumdani, but they, no matter what you do, they are so brainwashed and mentally ill. That they will not vote for the R. And it's unfortunate, but that's the reality. There's no changing it. Their, their mind is set. The Republicans are racist and some people we could get through and Curtis Lewa campaigns everywhere. He campaigns in the projects and in Brownsville and Canarsie and East New York. He's not afraid to go with, you know, out in the Bronx. It doesn't matter. He's everywhere.
And people told me, he does twenty hours a day sometimes. He's a machine.
Yep. Yep, I believe it. I mean, I remember when he was, uh, he came to the majority of my campaign events and. I'm on the phone with him and, or, you know, and he's, oh, I'm in. I'm in, uh, Queens now, was in Manhattan before and I'm gonna make a stop here, but I'll be there, like, so he's, he's in. Sometimes all five boroughs in the same day. You know, obviously because he, he, he tries to make every single event that people need him at. And it's not even just about him, just helping the local candidates too. So. He, he's got a really good heart and I mean, he's, he's been there for the people, helping the homeless. Cafecito posted the, the viral, uh, video before with him and the homeless person who interrupted one of his speeches, who. Some people think it was staged. I mean, this was four years ago. I remember it because I, I posted it during his last mayoral election. It's, he, he does that without the cameras rolling. He's a compassionate person. And, you know, if you actually wanna help the homeless and not give a billion dollars to the mayor's wife like we did with de Blasio that. Is nowhere to be found, two billion, um, you know, I was gonna say billions, but whatever the case may be, regardless.
Billion among friends and family, right?
Yeah, um, but. Yeah, to answer the question before that Cafecito had, the immigrants are coming to Democrat cities because even though they can't vote. The, they count on the census and that increases the number of, of congressional districts in that area. And the, the more congressional districts, the more Democrats in Congress. So. That's their reason for the Biden administration allowing this influx of illegal immigrants to come in here, increase the census numbers. Increase the Democrat, uh, districts and Democrats have a huge majority in these Democrat-run cities. Some of these congressional districts, Republicans have a tough time even getting twenty percent because people are so brainwashed. So. That's the strategy behind that. And if they eventually get citizenship, uh, some of them will vote Democrat. But even if they're coming from a communist country on a raft in, um. And, you know, in Cuba to Florida and eventually find their way to New York, it doesn't, it doesn't matter because they, you know. They, they increased the congressional district. So that's, uh, another, you know, destruction by design aspect to answer that part. And there was something else that you mentioned that I wanted to answer, but I can't recall right now. So I'll just pass it back to you.
Well, there's something that I wanted to, um, bring up, right? Back to Zorin Mumdani, right? Because the, I believe it was the Hispanic Federation, if I'm mistaken, had done a poll. And, um, how the candidates had ranked and, you know, not looking to go for Cuomo. But I'm not surprised, right? It, it, the way that poll was looking is that they were favoring Mumdani. So I just wanna take a little moment for our Spanish-speaking brothers and sisters who are based in New York. Si ustedes entienden esta conversación muy bien, por favor. Nuestros hermanos latinos necesitamos tu ayuda para. Decirle a nuestro hermano newyorkino que número uno, por favor, es importante y esencial. Votar en esta elección y número dos, por favor. Este, lo que te están diciendo de Zorin Mumdani y todas las promesas gratis, eso nos va a ayudar. Esos son mentiras y él no tiene mucha experiencia. Y como, como lo que hizo es un desastre, parte de lo que estamos viendo en este momento. En Nueva York es parte de lo que como hizo, por favor. Usa ese tiempo y spread the message. Just wanted to share that to the community that is speaking. Because one of the things that I keep getting as a feedback is how come there are not enough Spanish-speaking? Speak people disseminating messages to the community who are getting mixed messages, right? Like, some of them do see Zoran Mumdani as the savior, right? They, they, they look at, at, um, everything else as it's just the, the brainwashing. I, 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 I don't. It's just the, the brainwashing. I, 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 I don't get it. I, I, it, it really just. It makes me, it puzzles me, it terrifies me. And when I contemplate, um, people voting for Cuomo. I, I need to try to go into prayer because I, I don't know, um, if I could even find forgiveness for the actions that man has. Been a part of and the arrogance in which he walks in, um. Zora Mamdani, something that I wanted to share that maybe some people don't know who are so, such big fans of him. Is that some of the activism that is attracted to Zora Mamdani comes with a lot of chaos. That's destabilizing. That's my way or the highway chaos. Um. I don't know. I hope that it gets better in the city. Um, what are you thinking, George? How are you seeing this potentially play out?
I'm worried he might win. I mean, I, I just, because I think the vote's gonna get split among Cuomo or Sliwa. And I just think he's gonna eek by and, and I'm worried about it, but you know, I, I'm. Um, I, and you, there was a, a New York Times, uh, report. Of most of his advisors are under thirty or thirty-two years old. I mean, I mean, can you imagine, uh, no real life experience? I mean, to just, and they're gonna be running one of the biggest cities. They're gonna be running the biggest city in the country. Uh, the New York mayor is probably one of the most powerful executives in the country, probably after the president and to have. This, uh, plethora, for the lack of a better word, of no experience or life experience running the city. Uh, I mean, it's, 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 it's not gonna be good, you know? I would say life experience. Is the, I would say the number one criteria for a politician. And just, I don't see it in the city council and if Mendami wins, he definitely doesn't have it and the advisors around them.
Yeah, our friends on the Donald Trump, uh, New York Club one, it's to vote in, uh, BrooklynPoles.com. But the polls that I've seen, there was one that said, if it was a heads up race, who would win? And it showed like forty-eight percent Mamdani, thirty, forty-nine percent Cuomo. And this is, this is posted to tell all the Republicans, hey, you gotta vote for Cuomo. The poll had twelve hundred eighty-four people. There are millions of people in New York. The poll means absolutely nothing.
Nobody asked me.
That, that poll is ridiculous. And that's the problem. If this, that message is being spread. To not let Sliwa win. Adams dropped out to hurt Sliwa's chances because Adams wasn't gonna win. But he was gonna take five to ten percent of the Democrat vote away from the Mamdani. And now it makes it even harder for Sliwa to win because he's only relying on Cuomo to take some of those Democrat votes away. We know Democrats outnumber Republicans, uh, by a huge margin, eight to one, I believe, last time I checked. That number might have changed. Is that still accurate, George?
It's still accurate. Not in my district.
Well, no, I'm, I'm talking about citywide. Now, your district, whole different animal, um. But citywide, as far as the mayor race is concerned, it's eight to one. So you figure that's about fifteen percent Republican. Uh, as opposed to, as opposed to, you know, eighty-five percent Democrat, not counting independents. But Sliwa still almost doubled that with twenty-eight percent four years ago. All he needs is forty percent to win. He's been campaigning. The last four years on top of the campaign that he ran. He got the Chinese vote for Republican for the first time in ages. Like he's putting in the work. If you guys. Don't vote for Cuomo and just vote for Sliwa, Sliwa could win. And I'm trying to get that message home, but there's a lot of people. That just don't know that. They just, they don't believe it either. They just, they're brainwashed to think a Republican can't win. And if it was heads up, Sliwa against Mamdani, you're a hundred percent right. I'm not delusional. I know Sliwa couldn't beat Mamdani heads up because we have so many brainwashed Democrats. But a lot of those brainwashed Democrats, as much as they hate Trump and as much as they think Republicans are racist. They don't wanna communist either. They still have some common sense left. And that's why.
I don't think people, I'm sorry to jump in here. I don't think people realize this is not your grandfather's Democratic Party or your dad's Democratic Party. The Democratic Party is dead. It is now taken over by the Democratic Socialists of America. Governor Hokel surrendered to the party, surrendered to the socialist a couple of weeks ago when she endorsed Mendami. The Democratic Party as, as we knew twenty, thirty years ago is dead. It's now the Democratic Socialists of America. They've taken over the party and that's, you know, well, yeah, me too. I, I'm with you. Uh, that's the party. You're not voting, you know, folks, you're not voting for the Democratic Party. Of Roosevelt or Kennedy or, or, you know, you're voting for. You know, Che Guerrero's, uh, you know, version of the Democratic Party or whatever you wanna call it, you know, this is not the same Democratic Party. This is. Democratic Socialist of America, they control the party and they're gonna be calling the shots from now on. And if you don't like it, as a Democrat, they're gonna primary you.
Yeah, and here's my little rant cuz I hear.
Yeah, but I, I still believe that over, over fifty percent of the registered voters. That are Democrat don't believe in communism. And that's why I think there's a chance, as long as. You know, the Democrats are gonna split the vote with Cuomo, as long as the Republicans don't do the same. Like, we, we have a fighting chance, but there are people who just don't understand. Cuomo will continue to destroy New York. He'll continue what Adams and de Blasio did. He did it as governor. Mamdami will destroy it faster, but one way or the other, you're gonna have New York destroyed. Unless you vote for an actual change, unless you vote for Cuomo, uh, for Sliwa and don't vote for Cuomo. We're going to see continued destruction. We need Sliwa in to stop the madness, bring common sense back. And we need Republican candidates like George as well. So vote Republican down the line. That's what I'm saying. If you want an actual change in New York City, it's not a time to stop voting Democrat.
Yeah.
We'll start, uh, I guess, final thoughts unless Cozy or RA wants something to add, um, to this before final thoughts.
Yeah, I just wanna say that they're voting out of fear, okay? And you cannot vote out of fear because what they're telling me.
Cafecito, Cozy, anybody?
You guys don't hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Yeah, did you, did you wanna start with final thoughts?
Yeah, I'm talking. You can't hear me. Um, so what I'm saying is.
I can't hear you anymore.
Me? That's weird.
Ooh. What happened? Let me see if I could unmute you on my end.
There we go.
Kicking me out?
Wow, everything went silent.
We got glitches over there.
Can anybody hear me? It's so weird.
Can you hear me now?
Mic check, mic check.
One, two, one, two.
What's going on? I can't hear anyone. Wow.
They're, they're censoring us.
Wow.
We're, we're being censored.
We're experiencing technical difficulties in real time. I don't know what's going on. All of my.
Now Cozy got kicked off. George, are you hearing anything?
I'm hearing everything.
Okay, yeah, are you?
What's going on? Can you guys hear me now?
We, we could hear you fine. You just apparently can't hear us and Cozy's getting kicked out. So I was talking about. Okay, I was asking, try to see if you could bring Cozy back in and we'll just wrap up with final thoughts. In the meantime. Since I'm, I believe the people could hear us cuz it's still recording and, uh. We could hear each, me and George were able to hear each other. I'll pass it on to, uh, George for your final thoughts. Anything else that you wanna add to the. So the people of New York City as a whole and especially the people of your district.
Look, I believe that the people of New York will make the right decision. I believe in them. I believe in the future of the city. I believe we can be. I think we can preserve the quality of life and, and keep people here. I believe all that. But you have to vote accordingly. You can't, you know, you gotta break the spell from the Democratic Party and vote Republican all the way down. Vote for Curtis Sliwa. Vote for myself. Vote for Jeanine Aquafredo for borough president if you live in Brooklyn. Vote Republican all the way down. That's the only hope this city has.
Yeah, so you, you're talking, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
So you're, 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 that's your view. For me, like, you, you're being nice. You're saying that you believe that they're gonna vote the right way. I believe that New Yorkers are bleeping retarded right now. And I, I speak to them. You don't have to answer because I don't wanna get you in any trouble. Keep your thoughts to yourself. You're very kind, uh, for me. They're retarded. I'm talking to them and I have literally Republicans talking to me, telling me, vote for Cuomo because at least it's not Mamdani. I was like, listen, listen, you had Cuomo, you had his chance. He's a failure. He's an abuser. He created this crime epidemic through, like you mentioned before, this, um. This bail reform sneakily, like the snake that he is, he removed religious exemptions from children, he sexually abused women. And you're gonna forgive this monster nursing home scandals? What makes you guys out there who are saying to vote for him, what makes you think he's gonna change? He's the same scumbag that he was, okay? And on top of that, he looks like a castrated canary. Because when he's out there, he knows he can't say, he's walking on eggshells. He's like just smiling because he knows he can't say anything, right? So he's a captured, like castrated canary is what I call him. That's my new name for him. Cuomo the castrated canary. He can't talk. He's on eggshells and then you have him or the communist. Curtis LeWitt is the only sane politician. Longtime New Yorker. He's paid his dues in the city. Nobody could say anything bad about him. Have you realized, like? All across the board, you can't find really besides like a few little things, but overall, he's got integrity. Vote for integrity. Don't vote out of fear and you save the city. That's all I gotta say. Stop being cowards.
Stop being cowards.
You want me to save you for last Cafecito? You wanna do your final takes and then I'll do mine? Either one.
I have one question. Do you guys hear me on a double echo? Or you just hear me one?
I hear you perfectly.
Wow, really?
Yep.
I'm having.
Since, since your sound is working, you go first and then I'll do my final thoughts.
I mean, I'm gonna speak, uh, I'm gonna take this off because, um, I'm having a weird double echo in my head, but you guys can hear me clearly.
Yeah, now, 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 there's a.
Huh?
Yeah, so I'll do my, I'll do my, uh, final thoughts and then you'll close this out. So I kind of just.
Am I echoing still?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm stretching.
Alright, so. I'm gonna reiterate, George pointed out that he's, uh, he's killing grannies and, and. Slap, I'll point out that he's slapping fannies as well. He had a sexual harassment thing. He had fifteen thousand. People in the nursing homes killed. He's the bail reform Cuomo, yeah. Did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying that George.
Not George.
George, I said, I said George pointed out that Cuomo, I'm sorry. I, I gotta.
Wait, but now I'm here.
The, the clips would. The, 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 the media will clip that as me trying to say it was George. I said that George pointed out what, uh.
Too many ideas.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, we, we know who the granny killer is, killing grannies, smacking fannies. Bail reform. He had his chance. Co- Cozy said it. He had his chance. We saw what he could do as governor and he destroyed. The entire state with his policies.
And he lost in the fucking primary. Loser.
Exactly, but somehow they think he, he could win. I understand the logic that if all the Republicans go and vote. Uh, as well as some of the Democrats, but if, if Sliwa would have dropped out. They would have said Cuomo is the guy that Trump wants to win and, and Mamdani would still win.
But Mark, you know, you know what happened, right? Like, why do you think Cuomo stayed in there, right? He stayed, he was ready to jump, right? He was ready to bail. And you know what happened? Probably, I'm willing to bet big money on it. A consultant said, no, 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 Andrew, you got a chance. You gotta stay in. Cuz nobody wanted to get that gravy train to end because Cuomo can raise money. If Cuomo had no money in the bank after the primary, he would have been like, nah, 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 you need to get out. But he, he knew.
Well, that's.
Money of these consultants and they leached onto him and they kept him in the race.
That's the thing. That's the reason why Adams dropped out because he wasn't raising any money. So Cuomo was raising money, like you said, and. Uh, matching funds and everything. All these consultants are getting paid six figures to kiss his ass and. You know, it's, 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 it's a shame that these, you know, the system put in place with matching funds is meant for candidates like me. That's not a multimillionaire that doesn't have millionaire friends that are gonna donate enormous sums of money and give somebody like me a fighting chance. Even though the communist that runs the, the campaign finance board screwed me out of matching funds, but that's a different story for another time. But, yeah, that, that's one of the reasons, but I think. The fact that Cuomo is still in there helps Curtis LeWitt as long as Republicans don't screw this up. By going and voting for Cuomo. There's, I said it before, I'll say it again. Cuomo will continue to destroy New York. Mamdani will destroy it faster. For the Democrats listening to this. The, the socialist policies happened in other countries. It turned into communism. It turns into death. The, the local policies of free busing and, and. Government grocery stores that was tried in other cities in America and it failed because you run out of money. And what, what do they say about communism and socialism? Eventually you run out of other people's money because they don't, they, the communists never saw a tax that they didn't like. And they think money grows on trees. Eventually you run out of other people's money and that's what's gonna happen. The people, the smart people will leave New York City and all you'll have left is the freeloaders freeloading off of nothing. There's not gonna be any federal funding. Trump is not gonna throw any federal funding behind New York. Uh, it's not gonna happen. Mamdani wins, it's all downhill. If you think it's bad now, it's going to get worse and it's not gonna get worse before it gets better. It's just gonna get worse because they're going to screw up the election system to not allow, um. To not allow a chance. They're, they're gonna try to do rank choice voting for the general election. So Republican has no chance. This is the only year that a Republican legitimately has a chance to win. And you have to put everything behind Curtis LeWitt because there's, you can't do anything about it in December. You can't do anything about it on November twentieth or anything like that. Once election day is over, it is over. All hands on deck, donate, volunteer your time or at the very least, share it on social media. Have the discussion. If you don't want it to have the discussion, just share this video, share a different video, share something. People don't wanna post on social media because they don't wanna have arguments. You're talking about people who died. In wars, fighting for our freedom and people are worried about. Arguing or losing censorship or followers and stuff. You're worried about followers on social media? People lost their lives to keep the freedom in this country and we're gonna ruin it cuz you're worried about losing followers. Give me a break. It's time to save New York City. All hands on deck. Fight like there's no tomorrow because this is the last stand for New York City. And I'll pass it to Cafecito to close us out.
Alright guys, I'm having mic issues. I don't know why, but I, I just wanna say.
Sound good now.
Alright, thank you. Um, I just wanna say thank you to all of you who have been tuning in. Please like, share our show. Everyone here is doing the part that we can and the part where we need your help is in helping to share the message, right? Um, it takes but a second to talk to a loved one, to share a message, to encourage people to vote. I mean, you know, you know where, you know, where our, um. Focus is, but ultimately it's your choice and your vote. And many people sacrifice themselves for our right to have this choice. So use it in November. It counts because. You know, a lot of times people are saying, New York, you get what you pay for or you get what you voted for. And I don't like that too much because I, it, it almost feels like there aren't people fighting here. There are a lot of people. That have been fighting tirelessly all over New York, um, because they care about their communities. Just wanted to say some of the things that we're doing in our small group cuz everything. Everything helps is in our small group, um, we are actively getting flyers, um. Sharing it with each other on our free time. Um, we have members who are going out to the different neighborhoods who have mapped out which neighborhoods. Ha, um, may have least Sliwa coverage, for example, and they're going by themselves. No one, this is. Not anything affiliated with any campaign. This is just regular people who are just like, I wanna do my part to support, meaning you can do that too. Also, Cozy and I, we have stickers that we're also using. Um, so if you see us, we may have some stickers that we can share and that can also be a way that you can help spread this message. Look, it's not too late until it's too late. Uh, I know that I can't be. Uh, I know that I can't betray my, my conscience. I can't vote for someone like Andrew Cuomo. He doesn't even have the decency to even address the people when he's talking to them. I mean, this is just something that's so like, removed from the people, um. And I understand that he may have come from working class and boots on the ground, but that's not where he is right now. He had his chance. Um, I will not vote for Zora Mamdani or Cuomo out of fear. I don't think that people should be doing anything out of fear. Where there is fear, God does not live in fear, right? Um, why are we afraid to vote for what is demonstrated in front of us as goodness, as someone who loves New York? As someone who knows every single neighborhood in this city, as someone who understands the subway and the crime in such a nuanced way? Do you think that Andrew Cuomo or Zora Mamdani that's saying defund the police, oh, he's very well protected? Oh, he's very well protected. How you think it's gonna be just in a few months from now? We each have the power to make a different decision and have a different New York. So that's kind of how I wanna close the show. Thank you all of you for tuning in and supporting Cafecito Break. We have exciting guests that we are, um, looking to, to book and schedule. Um, join us next week, uh, for an exciting guest that you all know who he is, we'll share tomorrow. Everyone, thank you again. George, anything else that you'd like to add before we wrap out? Please let everyone know where they can, um, contribute to you and, um, and donate to your campaign.
Uh, yeah, so we, we're, uh, GeorgeForChangeNYC.com. Uh, we're, we're not looking at it for much as donations, as more for volunteers. We need people out there and we need the streets hard. So I need people, uh, if you wanna come out and volunteer, we're pretty close to maxing out. Um, I'd rather, I'd rather get, I need, I need bodies. I need people to give their time. And to go to your point, uh, you know, talking about family and friends, I, I make this little joke. Uh, I always say, it's not enough to talk to your family and friends. You gotta talk to that weird neighbor that you really don't get along with. Uh, Cozy's heard me say.
I got plenty of those people around me.
Yeah, you gotta talk to that colleague at work that you really don't like talking to. And you even gotta call up your ex-boyfriend, your ex-wife, your ex-girlfriend and call her up and make sure she votes. Uh, because we need like all hands on deck, like Mark is saying, so please, 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 you gotta get the message out. Call, make a call list right before the election, call ten, twenty people and make sure they come out and vote. And, uh, you know, if you call those ten, twenty people, I'm, and everyone does that, uh, we can win this election, but we need.
George, George, you're giving dangerous advice. You're telling people to, uh, reach out to their ex-girlfriends. You're gonna get them killed, man.
Although, although vote for the opposite of what you say, so you might need to use reverse psychology on it.
Just tell them to come out and vote, okay?
Well, thank you. This has been a fun show. Everyone, we are here Mondays, eight PM Eastern Time, as God permits. Join us next week with Ra, it's truly of Cafecito Break, Mark, Mark for NY, Cozy at Cozy's Wellness. George, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure having you with us today. And everyone, I'll see you soon. See you next week or see you, um, out on the streets, um, where, you know, you could find us doing local reports. Um, I'm gonna close out by sharing a video of Mr. Sliwa.
You don't think I can do a better job than comrade Bill de Blasio, the part-time mayor of the dope from Park Slope? You don't think I can do a better job than Andrew Cuomo? Who killed fifteen thousand elderly people as governor?
Shame on him!
You don't think I can do a better job than Eric Adams? Who should be in jail with Bobby Menendez for being a crook? I'm glad I'm not a politician. All three of them are and look at the mess they've gotten us into. That has led to the rise of somebody that nobody knew a year ago, Zohar Mandabi. The reason this is Zohar Mandabi is because of the Democratic Party. They didn't fight their own battles. They turned their party over to the socialists and now they wanna come to us. Your man Lou, they wanna say, oh, you're a Republican. We need your help. You can't possibly win, so help us cuz we're falling and we can't get up. They can't even stand and defend their own party. So they want now you Republicans to become rent-direct Democrats, Haitians mercenaries to help Andy Cuomo?
No way!
Who didn't even campaign in the primary.